Good afternoon. My name is Cameron Eubanks and I'm a junior here in the Center for Long Globe Policy Development. I would like to welcome you today to Riverbluff High School for the last School Board Candidate Forum. Now, we gather here today to fulfill our civic duty to learn about the school board candidates you'll see on the ballot next Tuesday. Now, I know some of y'all might be more worried about what's going on in the state legislature or the federal government, but this election in many ways is much more important than any other election. Now, you're probably thinking, "More important than the federal government? I mean, come on." But this election, it will directly affect all of our teachers and students, both now and, more importantly, in the future. These candidates, if elected, will affect teachers' wages, work to maintain our current school operations, and, most importantly, impact every student's academic life. So I challenge you to really think about which candidate will change this school district for the better by best representing the teachers, students, and parents in this community. I also challenge each one of you to consider the current state of affairs in our district and what you want this district to look like in the coming horizon of the tomorrow. Now, I would like to introduce our panel of questioners and our timer. For the first section, our Tax Dollars and Fiscal Responsibility, addressing our tax money being spent in the district level, we have a junior in the Law Center, Morgan Baker. For our second section, you may applaud. For our second section, our Students' Academic Experience and the School Environment, addressing school environments and students' academic life, we have our Law Center Advisory Board Member, Kimberly Cockwell. And for our final section, Educational Philosophy, i.e. what do you believe in, tackling our candidates' belief in education, we have a senior in the Law Center, Kaylee Burgess. And for our timer, we have a junior in the Law Center, Drew Alvis. I would like to thank everyone for coming to the forum today, and now I will turn it over to Mike Burgess, your moderator.
Thank all of you for coming out this afternoon. Need to wake up a little bit. Applause seems a little low-key. Maybe you're worried about the Panthers score, or whether or not the Cleveland Browns have a coach that showed up today, or maybe you're still worn out from Clemson scoring 77 points on a poor, defenseless opponent, or maybe you're worn out from the Carolina game, but certainly two days out from Election Day, we've got to have a little energy in this room. Perhaps the folks to my left will bring that. Real quick, I want to review with you the ground rules for today's event. We have divided this into three sections. Each section will be roughly 15 minutes. The first section will be Tax Dollars and Fiscal Responsibility. The second section will be our students' academic experience and the school environment. And the third section will be Educational Philosophy. For the initial question, or for each initial answer the candidates give, they have 60 seconds. Once 45 seconds are up, my friend Drew Alvis, one of our first two students from Gilbert High School, give him a big hand, a loud hand. All right. We'll hold up a yellow card, and when time expires, a red card. And if the red card is up there for a few seconds, I will remind everybody that it is a beautiful Sunday afternoon, there's football on, and I got basketball practice at 4 o'clock, so, and they'll need to wrap it up. Each of our questioners do have the ability to ask a follow-up question. I also reserved a right to ask a follow-up question as well. For a follow-up question, it'll be 30-second responses with the yellow card going up with about 15 seconds left. So, while I make my way up the towering ladder that is our riser and hope I don't fall off, it's time for you to meet why you came here today, and that's our candidates. Please give them a warm round of applause as they come to their seats. Thank you. At this time, we'll invite each of the candidates to, for a two-minute opening statement, beginning with Mr. Chris Rice.
My name is Chris Rice, and I am a candidate for school board, and one of the things that I wanted to point out is, one of the reasons I'm running for school board is, like you heard earlier, school board decisions affect everyone. They affect parents, they affect students, they affect teachers, our staff, our community, our business community. And to me, I am actually the son of two lifelong teachers. Actually, my mother's here today, a retired teacher. And I just learned from being in the home how much the decisions the school board makes affects everything. And so, I've always had a heart for children, always had a heart for volunteering and serving in schools and so forth. My daughter actually graduated from Riverbluff last year. My son is actually a seventh grader at Middle Glen Middle School. And so, I'm a parent. So, I'm a parent first and foremost, and I'm always in the schools volunteering, always helping out, doing things. I've been a Career Day speaker, Earth Day speaker. I'm a mechanical engineer, that's what I do full-time. And so, what I really want to do is, I just want to represent and serve the community at a higher level. One of my strengths is communication and relationships with people, and I feel like we kind of have somewhat of a communication disconnect between the board and the community. And so, what I want to do is kind of be one of those people that helps to bring that transparency and that accountability and that communications and relationships back into play. One other thing y'all asked us to address in our introduction was what was our vision for the next 10 years. My vision is, even though the growth is coming, we still need to continue to provide high-quality education even despite the growth. At the same time, 10 years from now, technology's going to continue to evolve, and so with my background in mechanical engineering, I want to make sure that we keep involving technology and science and engineering and mathematics in our curriculum and give people a quality education. So, thank you.
Mr. Oswald.
Thank you, and thank you guys for having us today and allowing us to share our views. My name is Tim Oswald. I'm a career educator, retired after 41 years. Thirty-four of those years I spent in Lexington One, and I've always been an advocate for children. I didn't think I had a talent for it when I started teaching, it was just going to be a part-time thing until I found a real job. And 41 years later, I retired, but the magic of teaching children and seeing children learn and be successful, I got tons and tons of students who are now teachers, doctors, lawyers, professors in college, and it just does my heart good to know that we can make a difference as a teacher and in education. And this is certainly a time that we need to step back and think very seriously about what we're going to do on Tuesday. We're going to decide the future of our children for the next decade, and that's very, very important. What we do today will inspire our kids to achieve and be successful for the next 10 I guess why did I want to be a board member? To continue that advocate role model for children. There's no other kind of ambitions that I have politically. I just love children, and I love seeing children succeed. My vision is to stay on top and keep Lexington School District One as one of the premier districts in our state. You know, when businesses and manufacturers come to town, they don't really look at anything else but our educational system and what we do to spend time and effort to educate our children. In the long run, I think history will look back on us and judge us, how do we treat our elders, and what do we do to care for our children? Good call. Thank you.
Mr. McCurdy.
Well, thank y'all for being here today. As Mike said earlier, I know it's easier to be at home watching football and recovering from football this weekend. My name is Reese McCurdy. My wife, Julie, and I have four children in the Lexington One district. Three are in elementary school, and one is in middle school. So, I'm invested in the Lexington One School District for the next 10 years, okay? So, vested in interest in what happens here. By trade, I've worked in the insurance industry for 20-plus, 25-plus years, currently running an insurance agency for Blue Cross Blue Shield. I have about 100 agents across the state that I'm responsible for and leading them in sales. In the insurance industry, we do a lot of things to look at finances. Everybody thinks the insurance industry has lots of money, and they do, but every year, if you're in the operation side, is a budget year, okay? So, we are always looking to try to do that. So, what I would say I bring to the table for you is somebody that knows how to look at that and try to, try to look at what kind of budgets we have out there and how do we make the best use of those budgets. You know, my vision is that we would turn around and see a student-to-teacher ratio of less than 20 to 1, 20 to 1 or less than 20 to 1. I think we can do that if we spend the time in looking at our finances and spending that money in the right direction. So, I appreciate y'all coming out here today. I hope that I can convince you enough or talk to you enough about that you'll understand my vision and how I plan to implement that in the years to come. Thank you.
Dr. Kyle Geithen.
Let me tell you a story and see if you can kind of relate to this. So, I was getting together some trash to take to the dump the other day, and my 12-year-old son was walking, and he stepped directly over a thing of trash to go do whatever he was doing. And I stopped for a minute, I said, "Son, hold on. Let's talk for a minute. You have got to stop having blinders on to the world. You have got to get out of whatever is right in front of you and open your eyes and look up. You're going to miss it, buddy. You're going to miss everything, you're going to miss every opportunity you can to make a difference." My name's Kyle Geithen. I am a local resident, I'm a local graduate of Lexington One School District, I'm a local pediatrician and a business owner, and a parent. I say all that to say, the reason I'm running is, it would be real easy for me to do the same thing my son did. It would be real easy for me to keep the blinders on, to worry about my golf score, to worry about the next deer I'm going to kill in the stands, or to whatever, whatever could take me away from something that could actually, truthfully, make a difference. I don't want to sit in front of a family who's struggling in my office with a child with anxiety and say, "You know what? I could have helped there." I don't want to sit in front of a frustrated business owner who's struggling trying to figure out what to do next and say, "You know what? I could have helped there." I don't want to sit in front of a local taxpayer and say the same thing. I don't want to do that because I can't do that. You have to open up your eyes and look up and see what opportunities and what you can offer. That, I think, is what helps to separate me, is the experience I have had in all of these areas, pediatrician, business owner, parent. As for vision, it's the same as what Lexington One stands for, creating a lifelong learner. One time, somebody said, "Well, there's only one way you can do plumbing." I agree. But if our student's a plumber, I want them to own 10 plumbing offices.
Thank you. And Ms. Garris.
Good afternoon. My name is Jada Garris. I was born and raised in Gilbert, and I have two children that attend Gilbert Schools. When I was an employee of the district, I began looking for the reasons behind much of the dysfunction in my department. To find answers, I started attending board meetings and soon realized that what took place in the boardroom filtered all the way down to employees, parents, and students. Currently, we have a top-down approach to everything that happens in our schools. The people with the least amount of frontline experience are given the most amount of power. I want to be elected to the Board of Trustees because we seem to be getting the latest and greatest quick fix to our schools, and in the end, the emperor still has no clothes. My vision is that we actually start manifesting our vision of empowering each child to design the future by empowering the people who are in charge of empowering our children. We must hire, train, and, most importantly, retain high-quality educators. We need to empower staff by enforcing discipline, and we need to empower teachers by giving them a voice in decision-making. Why does our budget include over $360,000 for executive leadership development, but our teachers are left buying their own supplies? I want to see our district empower educators with professional development opportunities and commit to seeing funds dispersed to the classrooms. I want to ensure that taxpayer money is well-spent and our children are well-served. How many principals or teachers have had someone walk in the door and say, "What is it that you need from me?" That's what a real leader does, instead of saying, "Look, here's what I'm going to do for you." I'll be asking, "What can I do to make your job easier?" Lexington One has so much to offer the students and citizens of Lexington County, and so many great things happen here, but we also need to acknowledge that public trust has been eroded over the years, and this was magnified with the recent Pillion land deal. Instead of addressing the problem, the district launched a campaign to polish their image. They show that they are more concerned with their public image than hearing people's outrage about a very poor decision. Since 2014, every vote except for two has had unanimous yeses. There is currently no dissent or public discussion.
Thank you. At this time, we move to our first thematic section. Our junior from Lexington High School, Morgan Baker, will take you through this section. Go ahead.
Do you support the adoption of the bond referendum that will be decided by the voters on November 6th? Why or why not, Mr. Rice?
Yes, I do support the bond referendum. As I started looking into it, I understood there were 115 people. Some were parents, some were business leaders, some were community leaders, and they were from all of our respective areas of the district, White Nile, Gilbert, Riverbluff, Lexington, and even Pillion. And all of those people came together and said, "This is what we feel like we need for the schools in our respective areas." And they gathered all that information and put together a bond referendum package that encompasses all of those suggested needs. And because they put everybody together, put everybody in one package, and put forth that referendum, I just trust 115 people know what they need in their areas, and so I can support that.
Mr. Oswald, same question.
Yes, I'm supporting the bond referendum. I think the key to success, our children's future, is what we do today, decisions we make. If you look at history, you'll know that education has made this nation great in the eyes of the world. People come from all over the world to be educated here. I just want to see Lexington One continue to expand and grow in a positive way. I don't want to see portables brought in. I want safety and security for our children. Portables is just, you know, it's a quick fix, temporary, not safe. So, I think we stand a gain a whole lot by supporting this bond referendum for our children's future. Thank you.
Ms. Garris, same question.
No, I do not support the bond referendum. I've heard quite a few people assert that if we don't support the bond, we don't care about our kids. I reject this notion. In fact, I believe that when we blindly follow people in power, we put our kids at risk. We need to start dealing with start realities and quit pretending that everyone wins. Teachers are being told they could be laid off if they vote no, and they could have upwards of 30-plus students in their classrooms. They're also being told that portables will be placed on playgrounds if there's no room on campus to put them. Dr. Little has scheduled staff meetings all throughout the district to incite fear in our educators. It's a shame that our children are being used as poems and our teachers are being lied to. If your board members retaliate against teachers by placing 30-plus students in your classroom because this bond referendum doesn't pass, but the average salary of a member of the senior leadership team is over $150,000, teachers need to protest until our board resigns their seats. Want to accept that schools are overcrowded and in disrepair not because of lack of funds, but because of where those funds are directed, that undercuts any argument that can be made. Read our annual financial report, because numbers don't lie and the money is there.
Same question.
I do support the bond referendum. I do so as a taxpayer and as a business owner taxpayer. I know what this means for me personally and professionally. I do so because I came up through this district. I personally saw what this district did for me, the support that every stakeholder in this community did to support me and my education, which eventually led to us coming back here from college to develop and begin our family. I do so because I believe it's the best solution we have for the current problem. If it doesn't pass, do we have options? Well, sure, sure, we've got options. But does it fit the needs that we need in the near future? I don't see that. I don't, I cannot find enough ways to produce appreciable revenue that will make a difference in the near term to address the things that the bond referendum seeks to address. Thanks.
And Mr. McCurdy.
Okay. I'm struggling to support the bond referendum, and I'm going to say I'm 95% no, and I will listen to the last rest of the 5%. But here's why I don't support it. So, if you go out in the annual report and you look at page 20 and 21, you'll see that teachers and teachers' assistants make up 52% of our expenses that are out there, okay? Fifty-two and a half, to be exact. If you do the math, it's 52 and a half. If you look at the pie graph on the next page, it shows you 54. So, take your choice, but the difference is, every half a percent is $1.5 million, okay? So, that's a big difference. I think we've got to look at how we're spending our money. The money is out there, we've just got to look at it and try to figure it out. The other thing I'd say to you is, we've just got to be good stewards of the taxpayer. If we're not good stewards of the taxpayer, we're going to be in trouble from a business perspective as well.
Given that South Carolina law prohibits school districts from spending operations funds on school construction, how do you propose to address facility needs if the bond referendum doesn't pass? Ms. Garris.
Like I said before, the money is there. One of my main concerns about this bond referendum is that it doesn't accommodate current overcrowding, nor does it accommodate future growth. It's saying that in Pillion, there'll be 628 new homes, but the amount of students is expected to decrease by 26 students. Plan B for me would be to go back to the drawing board and come up with a new bond referendum. They have a good roadmap for the next 10 years. They have, things could affect that such as sewer and other things, but their baseline census and other data is good. I'd like to see specific wording on the ballot that clearly states GES and PMS are priority one. We can go to council and discuss impact fees. There are several different things that could be done, and like Reese said, the money is there. The question is just, how are they spending that money?
Mr. Oswald, same question.
I sat through, let me see, worked through three failed bond referendums back in the 80s at Gilbert High School where I was band director, and at that time, we were going to school and buildings that were built in 1923. And, you know, people were arguing, adults were arguing about the issue, but in the end, the long run, the children and the teachers suffered. We're growing at a rate of at least one school a year. That rate is going to increase in the next 10 years. We're going to have 70,000 new houses, new residents. The comment, whether we build schools or not, or whether we put them in portables, the students are going to come, and by law, we have to educate them. So, I want us to choose the right way to educate our children, the best way possible. Thank you.
I actually have a follow-up to this. If November 7th comes, we don't have the bond referendum. You are elected. What do you bring to the first board meeting to address this issue?
Well, I guess we'll sit down and look at a number of things we'll have to do, including portables to accommodate growth, maybe schedule changes, I don't know, maybe lengthening the school day for maximum use of the school facilities. There's not things that we'd like to do, probably will be unpopular decisions, but things that we'll do if we need to.
Dr. Geithen, same question.
Can you repeat the question?
Given that South Carolina law prohibits school districts from spending operations funds on school construction, how do you propose to address facility needs if the bond referendum doesn't pass?
So, what you're alluding to there is a handicap system, which is financially what we operate here. Some of the unintended consequences of Act 388, we're seeing the results of that today. The simple answer is, you can't, not in its current form. You cannot take the same needs and timeline that has been proposed by the same committee that Chris Rice talked about, 115 people that came together and said, "These are the needs of the schools of this district," and do within the timeline in which it was proposed. It's impossible. There's not enough sources of revenue out there to do that. So, what do you have to do? Well, number one, you've got to listen to the taxpayer. The taxpayer's concerned. You have to go to the taxpayer and say, "Okay, you did not want to do it this way." So, we're going to have to look at prioritization, and we're going to have to figure out at what is the top of this level right now, and there is the starting point for us to begin.
Mr. McCurdy, same question.
Okay. I actually love the way Kyle ended that. He set me up perfectly. Thank you. I think we need to do that right now. We need to take, we need to set up and decide what are our priorities and do that right now. Remember, if we have this influx of people moving in, there's still, there are revenues that come with those, that include business revenues, that include students-per-student revenues that we get from the state. Yes, we need to use those appropriately, but I think we need to step back. I would question whether we prioritize what our building needs are. Everyone wins. Every school has something in the budget. And the last time I checked, we were a pretty conservative state, and that means that we should be really looking at our funds and saying, "Wait, am I buying votes for this to say, 'Let's vote for this' because everyone wins? Or am I actually looking at our priorities now and saying, 'What is effective in managing this?'" As a board member, we need to be effective in managing this.
And Mr. Rice.
Well, to be honest with you, if the bond referendum doesn't pass, and it's November 7th, none of the decisions that we have to make will really be popular. Just being upfront, as a parent, we may have to start, and I'm not trying to preach fear or incite fear in anyone, but right now, we have a good student-to-teacher ratio. We may have to reconsider that and start putting more students in our existing infrastructure classrooms, which can kind of have an impact on the level of quality education. We may have to look at flex scheduling. You've heard other people talk about that. I just think that, like I said, I'm in support of it, but I think we'll have to sit down as a board and we really would have to discuss, what are we doing? What are we doing to meet the needs? What is our growth? Taking a very close look. One of the benefits that I bring to the table is, the company I work with, we changed over from a one company to another company, and we had to take a real close look at how we were doing things and paying for things, and so I've kind of been through that process.
Thank you. This past spring, a controversy arose over the land acquisition deal to build a new school in Pillion. If a similar situation arose, upon what criteria would you make your decision to support or oppose? Mr. McCurdy?
I think I caught most of that. I'm sorry, you're breaking up a little bit. The deal, the land deal in Pillion, what would I, what was it that I would support or oppose? Can you read the last part of it one more time? I'm sorry.
If a similar situation arose, upon what criteria would you make your decision to support or oppose?
Okay, the criteria is what it is. Okay, so, one of the things, the criteria that I think that we missed in the Pillion land deal, there's two things that I think we missed, and we missed them very badly. One was communication, telling everybody kind of what was going on with that, letting the whole district understand the process of what was going on there. Two, we didn't really show that there were competing bids out here. I would question whether they were. We need to be open to that, and I'm going to add a third thing to this, too. My understanding, and I've got a pretty good understanding that this happened, is the person who brought the land deal to the table gets paid commissions on the sale of the product. He's the one who's working for us. He gets paid commission based upon how much we spend. That's not a good process for us as a school system, is to pay our representative to be the one who is getting paid the commission on that. He's supposed to be representing- He's supposed to be representing our interests, not representing the seller's interest.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Rice claims same question.
Could you repeat that question? I'm sorry, I didn't get all of it.
But you can still repeat the question, please.
This past spring, a controversy arose over the land acquisition deal to build a new school in Pelion. If a similar situation arose, upon what criteria would you make your decision to support or oppose?
Well, I think the first thing that you have to do, um, I'm not gonna sit there and dwell on what happened with the Pelion property, but I will say this. I think you need to look at, okay, do we need this property? If we need this property, I think the first thing you have to do is you have to figure out what is our criteria for selecting a property? And we need to look at what that selection criteria is, and then we also need to look at the total cost. Now, I work for a company where we build multimillion dollar projects, and a lot of times, you may think that's just gonna cost this, but you have to pay the engineers, you have to put in the sewers, you have to do all these different things. What I have to go to our upper management with for any project, I have to say, this is what the actual cost is. This is everything that's gonna cost you point blank. And sometime when we look at the two or three different scenarios and what they cost, what seems to be the cheapest in price in terms of total cost is actually more. So we need to look at the total cost, and once I see that, I can decide whether I support or whether I'm against it.
Mr. Oswald, question?
Okay, I think I got it now. Uh, yes, I, I think that looked bad, the way that was done. Uh, and I agree with my colleagues up here. There needs to be some competitive ways to do that through real estate instead of it being a closed system and one person's playing the game behind closed doors. Uh, I think it needs to be very open, uh, and needs to be competitive. Uh, but like, uh, like Chris mentioned here, I, I know there's lots, lots of criteria to look at when you're looking at a deal. Uh, I think there was some land given to the district at one time for a purpose of maybe building a school. And when all the facts were laid out and determinations made of costs, it really costs more to have land given to them in this instance than, than to buy some land that was already ready with sewer and water and those kinda things. So I, I know you have to look at all sides of it.
Ms. Garris, same question.
Well, I will dwell on what happened with the Pelion property because although the chamber was promised that our land practice purchases have changed, um, so that they would support the referendum, they haven't. Um, Al Berry is still showing up, offering people more money than their land is worth. I can promise you that I would do things very differently as a board member. I think we need to develop a protocol for buying land, and that includes a budget, outside appraisals, and an opportunity for other realtors to prove that they are just as competent as Al Berry. We also need a social media campaign aimed at telling the community, here's what we need, and here's how much money we have to spend on it. And most importantly, we need input from the community before a final vote is taken. And yes, this is possible. This could be done the same way that Lexington-Richland Five School Board provided information to the citizens of Chapin about their proposed land. The board took the matter to the citizens after they entered into an agreement. Then, on their website, they provided links to the appraisal, property information, DOT reviews, and other information for the community to review before the contract was finalized.
And Dr. Guyton?
So criteria one for me is the process by which we go about doing it. I'm for a process that looks at this from a blinded approach. If Walmart comes to you and wants to buy a piece of your property, I can promise you what's gonna happen. You're gonna add a zero here or there. Okay, now, I'm not saying that's what happened in this scenario, but there are ways in which you can go about acquiring property. It's commonly done within the business world to where you use a blinded approach such that the buyer, the seller, excuse me, does not know who the, the buyer truly is. And so I'm for an approach that looks to, um, get us the most of our money that we can. Secondly, I'm for incentivizing the person purchasing it on our behalf to get us the best deal possible. Um, I agree with Chris, the, the real estate, uh, commission world is, is a, is a difficulty for me because it is, uh, uh, from an approach of a, um, what is the sales price? Maybe it was Reese said that. Um, and secondly, I'm about appearance. What is the appearance of this, uh, purchase? And is there potentially an issue that we need to get out to the community in front of? Thanks.
At this time, we will move to our second thematic segment, that being our.
Um, before moving on to that section, I would like to ask each one of you, um, are any of you aware that before school started this year, there was a teacher convocation that took place with all of the administrators?
Teacher what?
Cut teacher convocation? Yes. As a simple yes or no question, I would just like for you to answer yes or no. Several of the teachers and administrators had to leave there in ambulances. It was very hot. There was, it was a really tough situation for them. So it was a day that they spent away from getting their classrooms ready and prepared. As a simple yes or no, I'll start with you, Ms. Jada. If you could go down the line and simply give me a yes or no, whether you felt like that was a good way to spend our school dollars was that day for those teachers?
No.
Yes.
Nah.
Yes. I'll say yes.
I have a follow-up. Um, for those of you, if anyone of you said yes, uh, could you maybe explain a little bit further your response?
I'm sorry. So you had a teacher convocation. I realize you had one. Right now, I do not know what the whole purpose of that convocation was. But to me, I always see that there is value in idea sharing. There is value in you interacting with the other teachers and interacting with your board. I'm a person where I feel like communication and relationships are very, very important. So it's good for you to have FaceTime with your leadership so you can exchange ideas. Sometimes they aren't arranged, but sometimes by being able to come together, great things exchange, uh, ideas back and forth. So that's why I would say yes without knowing what the convocation consisted of.
All right, we're good to move on? Yes?
Okay, first question I have for you is, should our schools be providing full-time SRO and metal detectors? If so, how do you pay for this? If not, how do you propose to secure our schools from gun violence? The first one I ask that to be.
Ms. McCurdy, Ms. McCurdy?
Metal detectors, no. SRO, yes. And the reason why, and where I'm going with that. Um, I'll go to, my children's school, they had a, uh, they had an SRO, uh, person that was involved last year. Um, all of my kids ate lunch with him and thoroughly enjoyed him and actually built a relationship with him. And it was really kinda neat because they all understood what a police officer now did in our community, or what they were. A police officer was no longer a threat to them. It was a protection to them. Metal detectors, I say no. I don't think we're there yet. I hope we're not there yet. Uh, in the sense that I don't want it to become that we have to go through that every time that we come to a school function or school facility or anything of that nature. We've gotta do better than that as a society, and we've gotta drive that. I know we've got to work on that, and I know we've had some scares, uh, here lately with that in, in the school system. So we've got, we've just gotta have a little more faith, I think.
I'm gonna repeat the question. Should all of our schools be provided with a full-time SRO and metal detectors? If so, how do you, how do we prepare for this? If not, how do you propose to secure our schools from gun violence? The question next goes to Dr. Guyton.
SROs, yes. Metal detectors, no. Other logistical measures to ensure security, yes. We're only talking about half the problem. Okay? In my office, I see the suicidal kids. I see the homicidal kids. I see kids who have gotten fed up with the system, with a culture that they feel doesn't care about them. If we refuse to address the mental health issues of our students, you can put all the metal detectors in the world, you can put as many SROs as you can fit in a school, you're not gonna fix the problem. You have to address the mental health concerns of our students, simultaneously addressing the logistical concerns and safety of our schools. We have very good, uh, police officers in this area, a very good police force. We have even, um, uh, um, these same people will come to our schools and tell us, what are the points of entry? What are our soft areas? We have to coordinate and listen.
As far as having a full-time, uh, SRO, I say yes, but just like the other candidates have said, as far as a metal detector, I say no. Um, I think the SRO is a good resource, somebody who can patrol the school, can look at different things. But in the bigger picture of safety, I think what we really need to do is we need to do certain assessments of our schools, you know? We need to actually take a very, very close look at, okay, the way we, you know, exchange classes, just, we, I think we need to look at, you know, who's outside and who's inside and when, and evaluate what those risks are. And I think there's some ways you can really mitigate some of those risks without having to have SROs and metal detectors all over the place.
Metal detectors, I don't know. I've heard people have pros, there's cons. Um, so I would just like to get some feedback on that from other schools who have maybe tried it and from parents in the community. As far as SROs, yes, we need an SRO, um, full-time in every school. How is it that we can afford a full-time SRO at the district office but not at every school? What are we saying to our children? When it comes to school safety, we can't have a blanket response for every school either. Each school needs to be evaluated individually and have a plan tailored to that specific school. Gilbert Elementary is a totally different setup than Gilbert Primary. With something as important as safety, we need someone who's an expert in this field, not just someone who is simply promoted within the district. We need to have those experts at the table when designing new schools and have that factored into the design. We need an open dialogue to address threats as they happen. It was a great idea this year to have important numbers printed on the back of students' IDs, and I'd like to take that a step further and see our school messenger system used to alert parents when there is a safety concern before the local media is informed.
Yes, I'm, I'm in favor of SROs, but not metal detectors. Um, I think it's important to have a person, a human being, that's there, that forms relationships. Uh, the most important thing, I worked with, with high school kids for sixteen years, and the most important thing that we did as teachers and faculty was to form those bonded relationships, those trusting relationships, that kids, kids will tell you what's going on if you'll listen and if they trust you. And I hate to bring this up, but I'm reminded of nineteen ninety-nine and Columbine issued, somebody was not listening. There were kids talking, but somebody was not listening appropriately, and that could, that could have been avoided. So I think the biggest thing is having those SRO officers sitting down at lunch, having lunch with kids, developing those relationships, but also the adults in the building, the faculty and administrators, developing that trust.
While your ideas are enhancing the teaching experience at Lexington School District One as a means to improving our teacher recruitment and retention at a time where statewide teacher shortages?
Improving teacher retention? Yeah. Uh, I said this a few days ago in a conversation to some folks that, uh, you know, we think that money is a teacher retention issue, and it is terrible that teachers come in, beginning teachers at the poverty level, uh, of pay, what, thirty-three, thirty-four thousand dollars? But if you sit down and talk to teachers, they're not gonna talk to you about their salary. They're gonna talk to you about teaching. They're gonna talk to you about their passion. This is what they want to do with their life. So it's more important that we create an environment for those teachers that they feel like they're appreciated, that they're flourishing, they're developing those teaching, learning relationships with their students. That's all teachers really want. And, and they want a, a good system to do that in. They're, they're supported, uh, by parents and community administrators. So I think, uh, that's the way to retain teachers. If you sit down and have a conversation with a teacher, he's just gonna talk about those kinda things, not, not money.
Would you guys like me to repeat the question?
While your ideas are enhancing the teaching experience at Lexington School District One as a means to improving our teacher recruitment and retention in a time of statewide teacher shortages? So the next one will be for Mr. Rice, please.
As far as our teacher shortage, teacher recruitment, I mean, first and foremost, I think, to be fair, we should benchmark our salaries in our district against, you know, other districts to make sure that it remained competitive. But at the same time, like I said earlier, with my mom and my dad both having been teachers, I'm telling you, most teachers that you talk to, they are in it for the kids and for the passion they have for teaching and not solely for the money. It's just like I remember a story I heard from my dad years ago. He had a football player who was struggling in math, and he would go to his home and would actually teach him on the porch, by the porch light, and would teach him. And you know what? It didn't matter what the district was paying, the district was not paying for that. And he didn't wanna be paid for that. He wanted to help the student. And so I think teachers need to be in an environment where they feel like they're respected for their unselfish work that they put towards our students. And I think if you do that and you benchmark the salaries and make them competitive, and as a parent, you work with them, you'll be fine, and your teachers will wanna continue to stay in your district.
Dr. Guyton?
My first office started ten, going on eleven years ago. We're now at seven offices across the state. We did that because you can't have our culture. You cannot reproduce the culture that we have made within our office. We push decisions down to the most basic, lowest level. If there's a need, fill it. If there's a problem, fix it. The same thing exists within the school district. You have to give teachers the lowest common denominator of decision-making. You have to empower them to say, if you see a problem, fix it. If there's a need, fill it. We have to press that down to the teachers as much as possible. We can give all the money in the world, and yes, absolutely, compensation is a very important piece. But at the end of the day, if you don't feel that support as a teacher, all the money in the world is not gonna make money more than any easier.
Ms. Garris? The school board has a monumental role in addressing the teacher shortage through policy development and approval of the budget. More than ten percent of our teachers left the district last year. I think we're in agreeance that we need to pay them more, but we also need to focus on retention. Teachers knew to pay before they took the job, so why are they leaving? We need to ask them and work with them to find solutions and also ensure they have a safe place to voice those concerns. As a bus driver, I knew that when it came to discipline, we didn't have the support we needed. As I mentioned before, what takes place in the boardroom filters all the way down. The district office isn't backing the administrators, so the administrators can't back the teachers, the aides, the bus drivers. Another solution I hear, this is simple, I hear it over and over again, just let us teach, quit innovating, and start educating. We need to reevaluate programs that do little good for students and overburden teachers. I feel that schools can become easily distracted by the latest and greatest gimmick that comes along, and we forget the basic goal of our schools. We need proven, time-tested, and sustainable programs in our schools.
Mr. McCurdy?
Two point five percent. That's how much teachers got last year for a merit increase. Two point five percent. That's not good. We can do better. We're, I quoted these numbers earlier, fifty-two and a half. We're paying fifty-two and a half percent of our budgets to teachers and teachers' assistant salaries. Georgia, North Carolina, Tennessee, paying sixty-one percent. That's money going to the teachers. Okay, there's a difference there. Kyle made a good point of we should trust our teachers. It isn't all about the dollars, and I agree with what he said there. There's, there's a lot of truth to that. We give them two hundred and fifty dollars. We give them two hundred and fifty dollars to use on classroom supplies. But yet, we spend, how many million? Two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty million dollars. We give them two hundred and fifty. Less than one, uh, one-half of one percent is what we give them. we give them.
Um, we're gonna end with one yes or no question, please. Given some of the issues related to the length of bus routes and quality of our buses, should the district seek to privatize our school bus system? Yes or no? Ms. McCurdy, I'll start with you.
Um, yes.
Ms. Guyton?
Yes.
Ms. Garris?
No.
The question was privatizing our transportation system buses.
Yes.
They were the last state in the union not to, so I'd say yes.
No.
All right, thank you for your responses. We now move to our third segment, and while I love all these panelists up here with me, this last panelist might be my favorite one, because she's my oldest child. Uh, with that, she is going to be asking you questions related to educational philosophy and what do you believe?
Ms. Garris, and... How are you uniquely qualified to serve on the School Board of Trustees, and how do you plan on holding yourself accountable to the voters?
Okay. My first priority would be to engage the community, um, before we make decisions. Um, we'd like our school board members to be the community's watchdog and to hold our district accountable. I'm going to ask questions before I vote, and that's why there are three readings before policy changes. Um, this is what transparency and communication are all about. I think our board members need to host forums throughout the year to have dialogue and discussions with the people that elected them. One of the roles is, as individuals, is to speak with the community and engage them before making decisions, and to seek regular communications between the board, students, staff, and all segments of the community. Um, I think I'm very transparent, I'm all about communication, accountability, um, and that's what sets me apart. Our district is obligated to share certain information with its citizens, and it's how we hold our board members accountable. Um, I've been attending board meetings for several years now, um, research processes, I know what's legally allowed to take place behind closed doors, and what should be taking place in the public. Um, attending the board meetings.
Mr. Guyton, Dr. Guyton?
Mistress, I'm uniquely qualified, hopefully I've kind of hit on that. I think my experience as a pediatrician, as a business owner, as a community member, as a parent, the only aspect that I see that I'm missing is the educator. I am not the educator of the group, okay? Um, I have not served in the education district, um, I have not served this community as, for example, Mr. Oswald has. So that's the piece I lack, so that's the piece that I would depend on for the, from the other board members. As far as accountability, this question came up before, and, and I have the same answer. If I'm not first accountable to myself, doesn't really matter about me being accountable to you. My character and my integrity are the things that have to be first and foremost in my mind. I have to be, I have to have an absolute refusal to compromise my character and integrity. You can have the fame, you can have the fortune, you can have all of that. At the end of the day, that's the only thing you're left with.
Mr. McCurdy?
How am I qualified, how am I qualified to hold the position? I think the, the biggest thing is, is I, I'm a parent, uh, in the district, I've got four kids in the district, they're gonna be here for the next ten years, okay? So I've got a vested interest in it as much as anybody else does here. Um, I think I bring a skill set in managing finances that, that we don't have, or that we need more of on the board, and I think I can help us in that way. As Dr. Guyton said, the one thing I don't bring to, to the table is, I'm not an educator. But you know what? Running a, running a business doesn't mean you have to be in the middle of the ground mark of that. This is about running the finances of the business. So I think I can still meet that accountability. How do I hold myself accountable? I think the one thing that we've gotta do, and, and it's really gonna be about the public holding me accountable, is we've gotta do a better job of communicating. We've gotta give them the information for them to then hold us accountable for what they need.
Mr. Oswald?
I s, I served in, uh, four different school districts, uh, was a high school band director for sixteen years, and maybe you don't get the gist of that, but I'm, I'm getting teenagers to go out and march in August in the heat and like it. So I, I think I have an ability to pull people together for a common cause, to find solutions together. Uh, I, I hope that my forty-one years qualifies me in regard to what's going on in education, what, what teachers need and want, and what kids need, and families, and community. Uh, I've been accountable every day for forty-one years, because if I didn't have those folks' trust, I didn't have a job. Uh, my job was on, when I was a band director, it was on the line every Friday night, when the kids went out and did their thing. And as a principal for, for twenty-five years, my job was on the line every day, convincing students, and parents, and teachers that, uh, I need your trust, and I think I delivered on that. Thank you.
Ms. Tyres?
Would you mind repeating the question one more time, please?
How are you uniquely qualified to serve on the School Board of Trustees, and how do you plan on holding yourself accountable to the voters?
One thing I'd like to say, you notice, you've mentioned uniquely qualified. I think all of your candidates up here are actually qualified to be a school board trustee. But I feel like I'm uniquely qualified because even when I took the Strength Finders, it, it showed that I was a relater, I was an incluter, and I was a communicator. And as far as being held accountable, you need to be able to look people in the eyes, and you need to be able to talk to them. I am a parent, and so therefore I'm in the schools, but I also go to some of the other district activities and so forth. And I'll tell you this, it is hard to look at you in your eyeballs and lie to you. It is hard to look at you in eyeballs and lie to you. In fact, I don't even know how to do it, it's not in my DNA. And so the fact is, if I'm out and about, and I'm, I'm available, I make myself available to relate with people, communicate with people, talk to teachers, talk to parents, be out in the community, make myself available, you know what? You feel free to come and talk to me, and I will tell you the truth. And I think that's what people are really looking for in a board member, is somebody who can be accountable, who they can trust, who they can talk to.
Thank you. Um, moving on to our second question, what do you think are two to three main duties of the school board, and is the current school board doing its duty? We're gonna start with Mr. Guyton.
I'm sorry, you broke up there towards the end, so main duties of the...
Of the school board, and is the current school board doing its job?
So the main duties, uh, from what I understand and what I have read, I think the main duty is to be liaison, to be a representative of the community. It is designed to be a sounding board for the school district itself, to carry out and support the policies and procedures of the school district, um, and to do so in a way that keeps into account the, the community, uh, perception and, um, approval. As for the current board member, the cor, current board itself, there's questions out there. There's obviously a lack of trust, you know, let's, let's not ignore. There's nothing wrong with you coming to me and saying you have a question about a decision I made, let's talk about it. But I'm gonna be honest and tell you that I feel you have to first give that person the benefit of the doubt before you begin to attack. So to say, "Are they doing a good job?" Yes, I think they are carrying out the, uh, required provisions required to the, uh, to the school district.
Ms. Garris?
The board is responsible for policy development, approval and adoption of the annual budget, engaging the community by being visible and communicating, approving employment recommendations, and ensuring the best person qualified is hired. Ensuring resources are distributed equitably to all schools, and approving contracts brought to them by the senior leadership team. Part of approving contracts means that board members are to support employment of the person best qualified for the position. I will vow to do whatever I can as a board member to put the right person in the right position. But has our current board been doing this? We don't know, because when I stood up at a board meeting a couple months ago during citizen participation and asked them about a person's specific qualifications for their job, they just stared at me, because nor do they engage the community by communicating with them. So when the board functions at a high level, it leaves room for central services and administration to function at a high level, but I think we're missing that key.
Mr. McCurdy?
The main meaning of the, of the school board, okay? Um, so I think the, I think the purpose of the school board for me is to make sure that we are handling the business of the school district, and making sure that that is being handled equitably and across all facets, okay? Now, I think there's some opportunity today in what we're doing. I think the communication is, is, is struggling with this. I think we've got to gain trust back in what we're doing. Do I think they're doing a bad job? I, I struggle to say that, because I don't know the job that they're doing. I think they, they've gotta do a better job of communicating back to us exactly what they are doing. I think we can get there, and we've got to get there, because the trust of the community is what we're lacking, and that's where we've gotta get to. If we're gonna be, if we're gonna continue to grow and thrive as a school district, we've gotta have trust in our school board.
Mr. Tyres?
Ms. Burgess, could you repeat the question one more time?
What do you think are two to three main duties of a school board, and is the current school board doing its duty?
Um, I think probably the first two or three things is, obviously, they have to work very closely with the district officials, um, but beyond such, I think their, their first duty is to ask the questions. I think they have to ask the questions to make sure that the district is holding the citizens' best interests at heart. Um, the next thing I think is, obviously, they have to help set budgets, they have to approve, uh, human resource appointments, different things like that. So, but I, I don't think that their duty is to just be the watchdog that says, "Hey, you can't do this, you can't do that." I think their duty is to come and represent the citizens and let the district know, "Here are the concerns that we have out here, and here's how you need to address those concerns." And so that's, that's kind of my thought. And I do believe that our board is doing a great job. I mean, if you all think about it, how many of us have the opportunity to sit on a board where you manage a two-hundred-and-eighty-million-dollar budget? There's not many people in the United States that do that, and for them to do it the way they've been doing it and still provide quality education for our kids is really phenomenal.
Mr. Oswald?
I think, uh, there's several things that the, the board, uh, plays a role in. Uh, but one of the main things, looking at budgets and, and recommendations for hiring people, all of those things are gonna happen, and we need to be a watchdog, we need to inspect what we expect. But I think mainly, uh, we need to help set a vision for the district, a, a vision for our future, a vision for our kids, and I think we need to work with the superintendent and bring that together. And I think that's a strength that I bring to the table, is that's what I've done my entire life, is bringing different divisions of folks together. And you're accountable to those folks, because they see you doing that, they see you interacting with different groups, and then they can trust you. I will earn your trust. It's called a board of trustees, is what we live and operate on, on that premise.
Okay. Our next question is, Lexington School District One has many initiatives under, underway, such as dual enrollment, code to, code to the future, and 4K. As a member of the school board, how would you make these opportunities available to more students?
I couldn't hear the whole question.
I'll say it again. Lexington School District One has many initiatives underway, such as dual enrollment, code to the future, and 4K. As a member of the school board, how would you make these opportunities available to more students? So after the 4K, yeah, how would you make these opportunities available to more students?
Well, I know that there is a study going on now with the district about 4K, whether it should be, uh, full day or half day, and, uh, I think some research is going on. And hopefully, in the plans that we're gonna have, if the bond passes, we're gonna see some larger 4K projects in various parts of, uh, of the district, which, uh, open up those opportunities for other families to, to have that benefit. I think, uh, so, some things I believe about that is that every child in every zip code in every attendance area deserves equal and the best opportunities possible. So I, I, I would really work hard at doing that as a board member.
Mr. McCurdy, same question?
So 4K and dual enrollment, obviously, obviously, as our kids come up and grow up and, and get into the school system, it's important for us to give them the, an early foundation. I do think we need to step back and decide how much we are, are going to invest in 4K, and where do we need to invest in? This is probably a budget conversation as much as it is anything. It's how much money do we spend in 4K when our, when our early childhood education dollars started, right, at the regular 5K kindergarten? So this is something as a, as a board, I think, needs to be discussed and looked at as we talk, start talking about funding. Uh, dual enrollments, I think that is something that obviously our, uh, our, our students do well with. I think that is a wonderful, a wonderful requirement, a wonderful thing that we can bring to the table. I would love to see us continue to expand that and kind of drive that, uh, with funding with that, because I think that helps us as we move ahead.
Dr. Guyton?
My daughter was actually the recipient of a 4K education that started here in the school district. My youngest son is in a code-to-future, uh, class setting now. So I see the direct benefits of it today, uh, and in the education of, of my children. How do you go about, I guess, encouraging that or seeing that expand? Well, the good thing is, those two things, if you look at dual enrollment, you look at 4K expansion, you even look at the mental health, uh, professionals that are being placed in schools, a lot of those things are actually self-funding. If we expand our ability to bill Medicaid, if we look at, um, uh, enrollment costs for a full-day program for 4K, for example, dual enrollment into a college that requires a tuition, a lot of these things are actually self-funding. So really, when it comes down to it, it's not necessarily the investment perspective, it's more of the intentionality perspective. And so are we being intentional about expanding this program?
Mr. Rice?
I think, um, kind of piggybacking on what some of the other candidates said, uh, I think you really need to make an assessment that says, "Hey, if, if this 4K that we have is that valuable of getting students off to a good start, is this something that we really wanna prioritize and we really wanna push forward?" If we're gonna push that forward, I think, it's just like everything else we've been talking about, we've gotta go back and say, "What are all the initiatives we have on the table and try and, you know, set some priorities? If this is a priority, you need to try and put some resources towards it." But at the same time, I don't wanna look past possibly teaming up with our community leaders that may have resources and may be able to come in, and we have some kind of a partnership, so it's not so much, uh, financially intensive on the district to try and do this. Uh, same thing with things like dual enrollment. I think there's a lot of colleges that are looking to try and bring, you know, more students in and wanna kind of connect with good students, and so we need to talk real closely about how we can partner with them and how we can increase those relationships and those partnerships with them.
Ms. Garris?
To me, it's all about priorities. With a district this wealthy, we can be reaching every single child at every single school with equal opportunities. Kids in our school district are being offered different educational opportunities based on where they live, and that practice has to stop. We have magnet programs at certain schools, and people move to that area for that program. We are not using best practices in education. We need to constantly review feedback to make sure what we are doing is what we are intending to do, provide our students with the best education possible, but the cycle's not happening. And if there's other funding available, then we need to be looking at that as well and having conversations about those funds.
At this time, we normally in a debate or a forum, we, we give each of the candidates a final word, but we're gonna, we're gonna do something a little bit different here today, and give the final word to a representative of, honestly, why we're all here, one of our students. So I'd like to call to the stage, uh, one of our Level One, our junior students from White Nile High School, Connor McDougall, who will offer the closing statement. He is gonna borrow the one mic, we are sure, will work, uh, to make, make his very first speech, so y'all please give Connor a big hand as he comes up here.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, everyone. As you said, my name is Connor McDougall. I am a student from White Knoll, White Knoll High School that actually travels to Riverbluff High School to participate in the Center for Law and Global Policy Development. I would like to thank the candidates for being here and giving us some insight into what they believe in and what they would support if elected. We hope this forum has helped everyone here to continue to develop their opinions and to make up their minds as to who they will vote for on Tuesday. Finally, and arguably most importantly, I would like to thank all of you for taking time out of your weekend to be here. It truly means a lot to know that there are so many people that care about not only the future of my education, but the education and future of all of the students in our community. I can only hope that each and every one of you will take this event into consideration when you go to vote on November 6th. So, with all that being said, thank you once more for being here, and have a wonderful rest of your day.